All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, May 2, 2018. The time is now 7:00 PM, and I will call into open session the Northborough School Committee for our regular May open meeting. And first item on the agenda is going to be opening this evening for a public hearing on school choice. It is also an agenda item, number eight, under new business for school committee members. So at this time, I will open the hearing up to the public if there is any input from the public in regards to -- after we have a little introduction from our superintendent, then we will turn to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Every year at this time in May, we begin our meeting with a public hearing on school choice. I will provide a brief overview of the school choice option and highlight its components. Chairperson will welcome any discussion on this topic, and we'll close the public hearing. A formal vote will be taken as to accept the school choice provision during or not during the regular meeting agenda, and I believe it's item number eight tonight. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B requires that each year, school committees consider whether their district should be in the school choice program during the upcoming school year. If they choose not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, they must take a vote prior to June 1 and report the results to the Department of Education. If we do not vote by June 1, we automatically become a school choice district. The vote is recorded and forwarded to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Historically, Northborough Public Schools has not been a participant in school choice, and it is my recommendation once again to the Northborough School Committee that we do not choose to participate in the FY 2019 school year. My recommendation is based on the following. The current fluctuation of class enrollment throughout the school year, the impact on enrollments in successive school years, that being students who are enrolled at any grade level in the school choice program are entitled to remain in the school district through the K-8 school system. Reimbursement has not changed since about 1992, when school choice was first launched, and that reimbursement from the state is $5,000. The actual per pupil expenditure to educate a student in Northborough K-8, as of 2016, which is the last per pupil expenditure number released, is about $16,000. So there's quite a significant difference between what we -- our per pupil cost is and what we receive from the state. And finally, many neighboring districts are not identified as school choice, and for us, it could perhaps impact their status or their enrollment as well. So with that...
Thank you. Thank you for that. So with that, we will -- I will turn it over to the public, invite members of the public for any of their input, as this is a public hearing. Okay? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And as already mentioned, we will discuss as a committee later in the agenda. And next item, special recognition.
Well, as May is school choice month, it is also not always our choice to say goodbye to school committee members who have served the community and certainly our K-8 school system so incredibly well throughout their term, however that term may have been. And unfortunately, and I don't think in the last eight years I recall where we were actually saying goodbye to two members in one given year, and so it's a little sad, and it's a little bittersweet to wish both John Kane and Patty Cress well as they continue whatever pathway they may be on. Hopefully, they'll be returning to our school system at some point, maybe back on school committee. John has been a devoted school committee member for two terms, hard to believe, six joyful years, and still serves, thankfully so, on the original school committee. So we're very happy that he's still involved in supporting our school. And Patty Cress is two terms in a spare. She had one extra year in there when someone actually resigned during their term. And so we thank you both tremendously for all of the hard work and hours on subcommittee, policy subcommittee in particular. I think just about every subcommittee we have, budget, operational budget, and policy, and a few extras in there somewhere over the years, for your wisdom, your positive spirit through some challenging budget seasons, and just your enthusiasm for all that is public education in Northborough.
Thank you.
And we do have a few parting gifts, and I would, speaking of parting, I would like to ask Jen Parsons, who we all know is -- will be moving on at the end of this year, and Sue Witten, who is still smiling. She, after 20 years of dedicated service, as I've been calling her Sue Z because she is Z-School, has been part of the Z-School forever. And I'd like to ask them to join me in presenting.
I'll put my glasses on. Where are we going?
So one gets Jack and one gets Patty.
Two K's.
And so additionally, I would like to read the citations that are awarded by the Massachusetts Senate to John A. Kane III. It's an official Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation, which means it's in the record at the State House. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to John A. Kane III in recognition of your dedicated service as a member of the Northborough School Committee, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Harriet Chandler, William F. Welch, James B. Eldrich, May 2, 2018.
Thank you so much.
And I think we'll hold off on the two gifts, and we'll hand them out at the same time, because they both symbolize kind of the same things. So, to Patricia A. Cress, you have the same middle names and the same last initial. This is strange. It only took eight years to figure that out, right, or six years? Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Patricia A. Cress in recognition of your dedicated service as a member of the Northborough School Committee, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, also signed by Harriet L. Chandler, who is also retiring this year after many years of dedicated service, William F. Welch, and offered by James B. Eldrich, May 2, 2018.
Thank you.
And as with tradition, we have a gift presented by the school committee to the school committee, and also on behalf of the public schools to both of you. One, the square box. Hopefully, you will never look at this, because you can never be late for a meeting again. So if you can guess what that might be inside the box, they don't need to be mindful of the time on Wednesday night or any subcommittee meeting event, and so we thank you very much. And Patricia's is in recognition of your dedicated service to the students of the Northborough School District, 2011 to 2018, presented by the Northborough School Committee. And John's is in recognition of your dedicated in service to the students of the Northborough School District, 2012 to 2018, presented by the school committee. And both of these are the highest symbol of excellence that we award in the district. It is a crystal apple, symbolizing education being the heart of all we do, and crystal because each facet of a crystal is unique, and we really appreciate your unique talents and skills in leading us forward as school committee members, and both serving as chair through the years. So thank you again.
Thank you. Ready for cake?
I'd just like to thank the voters of Northborough for electing both Patty and our families for supporting us while we served. I thank committee members, both past and present. Thank the administration, all the principals, all the staff, teachers, for this wonderful opportunity to serve this wonderful district.
It's a great community. It's been a great experience. Thank you, everyone.
And in keeping with tradition, we have cake. So tonight, we have an audience. It is our lucky event. It is perfect timing for the audience, and so we invite you all to join us. We'll be taking a 10-minute break.
10 minutes, 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. We will continue on with our agenda, and the first two items on the agenda, action on minutes. So I'm open to one motion for approval on the first three, and I believe number four, no, we can do them separately if you prefer.
Well, I just have one small revision to the second, the Saturday, February 24, 2018. I was not present, so if you could move me from the present category to the absent, and then we just have to decide whether Keith was or was not there.
Always there in spirit, though.
Just one or the other. Sorry. He can't be both. So he's also absent, so if you could cross me off, put me as absent, and cross Keith off of present. And other than that, I think we're good. We could do the first three, and if you want to have a conversation maybe about the last.
I don't believe Youngman's there.
Where?
On the Saturday? She was there. I remember seeing her.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe she was.
She actually made a few comments. There is cake, so audience members, feel free to have cake. So we can still do motions separately if there's a motion on the first one, on the action on the open meeting minutes of April 4, 2018.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented for the meeting of Wednesday, April 4, 2018. Seconded.
Any other discussion on these minutes? All in favor? Minutes? Thank you. And then, do you want to, I mean, do you want to bring them back, or do you want to just...
I just wanted to give some context for the subcommittee minutes.
No, we're still voting the next two.
Yeah. You just want it corrected, right?
Yeah. I move that we accept the meeting minutes for the special open meeting dated Saturday, February 24, 2018, with the revisions as requested.
As already mentioned. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Was there any further comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now you have...
So last year, we did, we followed the same policy, which was to bring the subcommittee minutes back if we were not anticipating that we would have the subcommittee between now and the end of the year, so that in any given year, we can actually stay current. And it was well received last June. We had a number of them that we voted on in the last meeting. So that is why you have three subcommittee meeting minutes, sets of minutes before you this evening. It is not anticipated that we will have a capital planning subcommittee meeting, an operational budget subcommittee meeting, or a policy development subcommittee meeting. So approval of these minutes is current for the year with all of our meetings.
Great.
Before we get there, I move that we accept the minutes for the Northborough School Committee special open meeting dated Monday, April 23, 2018.
Okay. It's asking any further discussions on meeting the special open meeting minutes from April 23. All in favor? Okay. And then...
Now we go.
Yeah, now we can go.
So having said that, that's why they're in the packet, and there are also a number of executive session minutes that we had retained. We no longer need to retain these minutes as the matter that was discussed has been concluded. So we are asking that we actually release these minutes.
So do they, I thought they were, so they haven't been voted on to accept yet, so they need to be voted to accept and retain?
Or accept and release.
Well, we're approving the subcommittee minutes, and then we're voting to release the retained executive, the executive session minutes.
Right. They've already been voted on.
They've been voted to accept and retain, but now we're just releasing them.
Okay.
Do it all with one.
Sure.
I move that we vote to approve the capital planning subcommittee meeting minutes of October 2, 2017, the operational budget subcommittee meeting minutes of February 6, 2018, policy development subcommittee meeting minutes November 16, 2017, and the executive session minutes of December 7, 2016, January 4, 2017, February 1, 2017, March 1, 2017, and April 5, 2017, to release those retained executive session minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
We have action on minutes out of the way. We move into new business, and first item there is Northborough Education Foundation presentation. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. I'm Megan McGinty, NEF president, and this is Sue Ogar, our grants committee chair. So it's been a busy few months. The last time that we had an update, actually, I looked back in the notes, and we had raised $16,000 for the Chromebooks. So since then, that campaign has come to an end, and with conclusion of that, we raised over $50,000 for Chromebooks and classrooms.
Wow, thank you.
The, this is outside of our usual grant money, just for our frame of reference. We've also added some new events, and we're fortunate this year to have received a platinum sponsor, Sullivan and Cress Financial Advisors. Today, to date, we have had a few events. So in February, we added a new event. We had our second annual Gala Junior, which is for the younger set, so kids from ages 2 to 10 come, get all dressed up, and it's kind of like a sweetheart dance. This event raised about $6,500. In April, we had our eighth annual team trivia night, and for the first year, we were sold out, and this event brought in over $15,000. Next week will be our fifth annual Princess Tea for all the little girls that are out there in our community and surrounding communities, and this usually brings in approximately $6,000. Our fourth, in the fall, we'll also have our fourth annual adult gala, and that usually brings in approximately $13,000. In addition to this, our Golden Apple Campaign is going on now, and this is very popular during the holidays, during Teacher Appreciation Week, which is next week, as you know, and at the end of the year, and this honors our teachers and all the work that they do for our kids. This is also, it's a very successful fundraiser, but it's also great because we have matched dollar-for-dollar from Wheelhouse Wealth Advisors.
Great. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to tell you a few changes we've made in the grant process, and also sort of talk for a second about where we've come from, which is great. So I started about six, seven years ago with John, and there are about six of us, and some of the principals, I know Sue Witten and a few of the others, were involved back then. We were a really small group, and that first year that I was involved with the grants, we, I have the exact numbers, actually, we granted $8,543 to the Northborough Schools, and then including the high school, which was great. But since then, it's quite amazing where we've come. So in those, you know, six years, this past year, we granted 36, over $36,000. And then in addition, the Chromebook campaign went beyond our goal of $50,000 and came in at $53,600. So it's a total of almost $90,000 last year. Now, last year was a special year because we had the Chromebook campaign, and we, you know, we're not going to be doing that every year, but just in terms of growth, it's sort of phenomenal. So this is my second year as grants chair, and it's been exciting to be on the other side, just sort of to see where all the money's going. So just quickly, we made a couple of updates to the way we're doing the grants. We did some research, we worked with the principals to make some changes to the criteria. So last year was the first year we added professional development in, so that's something that people can request money for. We also changed the way we're doing the intents to grant, so it's a rolling process. So if somebody has an idea in the middle of the year, they don't have to wait to that certain span that we're accepting the intents. We're finding that a few people definitely came back from professional development or something and had a great idea that they might have kind of put aside and were able to send that in to us early, which has been great. This coming Monday is the deadline for the intents for this year's grant cycle, and I have over 20 of them right now in my Google Drive box waiting to all be reviewed and read. So we're thrilled. We thank the principals for really getting to their staff to get those in. The next step in the process is that we make sure those meet the criteria, and then we have the full grants come in. Sometimes we do a little feedback back and forth with the teachers if there's questions or if there may be, there's not enough detail. So we're thrilled about that, and we're adding a new role to the grants committee. It's somebody to work with the people who have received grants to get more feedback on how that's gone. And that really sprung out of something that came out of Malachin. Some of the science teachers got a grant this year, and they were really excited and asked me to come in, and I took some photos, and we were able to get some press, get some articles in the newspaper. We put it on our website, and that allowed, I think, the community to see where the money's going. So that, you know, it's great for us to have these fun events. A lot of times, people go to the events, they don't even like the gala. They may not even care if they're supporting any or not. Hopefully, they do, but either way, it's a great event regardless. But getting that feedback allows them to realize where the money's going, so hopefully we can continue the community support that we've been receiving, and some great corporate sponsors that have come in, too. So we've added that role to really work back with the staff to figure out, like, how did that go? How was that grant? Was it useful? And also, can we spread that across the other schools? Can we share, share knowledge? I think that that's pretty much it. I had one anecdote I wanted to add. I was at the high school, my son was going to the high school in the fall, and I was up there for my tour, and I, my tour guides were two, sophomore and a junior, and they brought me to the brand-new writing center that NEF sponsored and provided money for to create, and they, I didn't mention anything about, you know, who I was, but they were so excited about the writing center, and it was just interesting for me to be on the flip side and just hear the students say, "This is amazing. I love, you know, if I have a free period, I come down here, I work with other students." And it was just really rewarding to sort of hear that, you know, unsolicited information. So I think, you know, as we get more feedback on all the grants, it'll be great to share that with people. Any questions?
Well, obviously, congratulations. It's the success of NEF and the team that you've put together is wonderful. That's near and dear to my heart. Obviously, congratulations. It is amazing to see, you know, where you've brought that organization to, and as we go through for the last couple of years, some fairly tight budget cycles, that matters, that those grants that you were able to provide back to the schools, and this is going way back when we had limited means, that matters. That enriches everybody's experience as they go through the K-12 in this district. So again, thank you. Please thank the entire staff for their tireless efforts, and, you know, I look forward to more signature events and more years of continued success for NEF, because you're a vital part of the educational experience here in this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will say, we went from about six people when John and I were on it together, and now we have about 15 to 20, which is great. So we're trying to keep sort of that young blood going, and some of us get a little more tired.
Way, way back in the day, it was four. It was Sue Witten, Charles Gabron, me, and the treasurer at the time, Julie Leonard. So again, to see where it's gone to is fantastic. So again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the school district, we can't express our gratitude enough for not only the continued support of our teachers and our administrators, but also last year, certainly with the Chromebook initiative, how successful that was and how many people were involved. It allowed us really to leap forward with our one-to-one initiative, which could have taken many, many more years.
Right.
But also that you launched so many innovative ideas that, it's so exciting to hear that there's a midway point as well, because new ideas happen all year.
They do.
And to capitalize on those moments is so, so important. So thank you on behalf of all of the educators and administrators in the district. We really appreciate all of your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there's cake.
Next item on our agenda is the Lincoln Street School Improvement Plan and PTO presentation, and I believe the PTO going first?
It's hard to follow up after cake.
Suck ass.
You know, we'll try our best.
You'll be fine. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, as always, for having us here. It's always fun to come and share what we've been up to with PTO. So many people know that what you do is behind the scenes and just kind of happens. So it's nice to be able to pull our thoughts together and see what we've actually done. We're coming out of our first full academic year, sounds construction, which is very exciting. And although we've, as we were talking about this, we thought back on how great it was to be able to provide support, construction, moves, and all that good stuff. It's been really great this year to be able to work on our inner PTO group, to really move ourselves forward, and to work on what we've been wanting to work on, continuing our 501(c)(3) process, which is a very long process. But it's been great to be able to sort of invest in ourselves and put some energy there. For a couple of years now, we've been wanting to get all of the Northborough PTOs, the elementary schools, together, and we finally did it. On March 18, nine people from Z, Lincoln Street, and Peaslee, PTOs came together, and we sat for three hours, and we just talked and brainstormed about best practices and how somebody does this and somebody does that, our accounting systems, our enrichment programs. And it's just one of those things that we've been really wanting to do for a while. So we're happy that we did that. It's also nice to commiserate with people that are in the same spot as, you know, how do you get just one more volunteer for lunch duty? So it was a really positive session. Although Proctor wasn't able to join us that day, we're looking forward to all getting together again before the close of the year, just to sort of recap and have them join us and really, you know, come to working terms with how we can move forward and really utilize each other. So we plan to do that again. As we were talking about this past year and remembering how good it was to support everybody, like I said, it's just been nice to kind of pull from the outside now. I feel like we've been inside Lincoln Street, and now we're opening up a little bit. This year, we kicked off our year similar in approach to how we have in the past, focusing our energy and our efforts on community events and family fun nights that not only bring everyone together, but also help us raise money to fund all of the programs and the grants that we do. I know you guys have heard this story before, because I've been here for two years telling it. It's been three years since we surveyed the parents of Lincoln Street, asking them what they're interested in for extracurricular activities, how they want to be involved, what's important to them, and how they want to help support the PTO's effort. Three years ago, I was new to Lincoln Street, but it's no surprise, thinking back now, that families and students wanted fundraisers that were more than just wrapping paper and cookies. Not that there's anything wrong with wrapping paper and cookies, but they wanted experiences that would build upon this already close-knit group of people, and it's really wonderful to see it all come to... Not that there's anything wrong with wrapping paper and cookies, um, but they wanted experiences that would build upon this already close-knit group of people. And it's really wonderful to see it all come to fruition. Um, parents are making great relationships with other parents. Children are playing with their neighborhood friends. Um, and it's starting to even grow outside of just this small community. Just at the Wizards game, for example, having Sandy Bunzick and Jen Smith be part of that. Um, and I know Jen wouldn't mind if I picked on her. You know, she's a mom. She's got two kids and lives in Worcester. And it was a Thursday night and she couldn't have been more thrilled to be part of the Lincoln Street team. Family in tow that night, just breathing and just being part of that energy. Um, so it's moments like that where we sit and we look back and we are so thankful that we have taken this approach to, to really pare back on a lot of specific fundraising events and just bring more community group events. Um, and that brings us to our family fun events, which are a big part of what we do.
So I'm Deirdre Watkins. This is my first year.
I'm sorry. I didn't even introduce. I apologize.
This is my first year at Lincoln Street, so she got me, you know, fresh. So as part of our family fun night events, uh, we had our spectacular event in October, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year. Um, we also have restaurant nights throughout the year, which have been very popular. The Wizards game, as Jen mentioned. Um, we also had our first game, right? Game night, which Natalie Beirandivan helped us, um, run, finish, uh, from start to finish, excuse me. Um, we got over a hundred people in the cafeteria that night, so we were really excited about that.
Yeah, it was a rainy Tuesday and in this age of technology, when you look around at an elementary school cafeteria and there's over a hundred people playing board games and the kids are laughing and parents are smiling, it was just a really cool thing to see.
And being our first, first time we'd done it, we were very excited that there was that many people. Um, and we'll continue these events. Uh, we have Bingo Night coming up this Friday. Uh, we have the Red Sox Night at Fenway Park coming up. And we also have our end of the year pizza party on June eighth. So, um, oh, and we also this year were able to, uh, get new spirit wear for our school. So we're very excited about that. For all of these events, right? Yeah. We're going to start Spirit Fridays hopefully soon. So.
So we do like to have fun at Lincoln Street. I feel like there's a, um, definitely a theme there. Um, but in addition to all that fun, it's really great to be part of a community that likes to give back as well. Um, the week before April vacation, we did our annual Healthy Snacks Food Drive. And that was a collection of parents and students collecting every day and tallying up what we had. And we were happy to bring over a hundred and fifty healthy food snacks to the Northborough Food Pantry. Um, we like to give back to our teachers. We love teacher appreciation. Um, we have lots of fun planning that. And, uh, in the spring, we did our teacher appreciation lunch. Uh, next week, we have lots of fun things planned. We have soup and salad planned on Monday and sweets and treats and coffee. And then we have a fun little surprise for Friday. Um, so as much as it's a reward and a good thing for the teachers, it, it's a fun piece for us as well. You know, we work hard to raise all these funds, but then we get to give back. Um, let's see, in regards to our grants and giving back, um, we have been so thankful to be able to give and approve almost every grant that's come through. Um, and in our position, there's nothing more exciting than that, than getting these papers come across your desk for materials or, um, books and Deirdre's going to go through them. But it's just such a great experience to say, yes, 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 we can do that. Um, so a few of the grants we funded.
Let's see, we were able, the first grade teachers, um, did a musical this year on our empathy theme. Um, there is also a chess club now starting. Um, they are starting a, a garden club, like a garden bed outside.
Mm.
Um, let's see what else do we have? Oh, the third grade was able to get everyone's subscriptions to some dog. And then, oh, we're, oh, the LSS library got a big grant this year to help with picky readers.
Yeah.
The early first, second, and third graders. So.
Yeah, we've done a lot of funding for the library. Um, I think many of you have probably seen that big, beautiful new library that just is craving more books. Um, so we, towards the end of last year, actually, we worked with Mrs. King to fund a lot of, um, new geography books for what the fourth grade was doing. Um, and again, the first grade, um, and the subscriptions, we're happy to be able to fund as well. And I've got to just tell this little story. So we both have kids in second grade and they came home and they were talking to us about some dog. And some of the students were able to log on to one thing and some weren't. And one of our daughter's friends had raised her hand. Well, Mrs. McCann, you just need to talk to the PTO. They fund that, you know? You know, and it's like, so these kids are hearing this through osmosis. They're getting what we do and it was.
Mrs. McCann emailed us and we.
Said, how do we do that? Um, but out of the mouths of babes, right? Um, so no, it's been, it's been good to be able to do all that. Um, and as we round out the end of the year, we'll continue to keep the Lincoln Street community informed through our Tuesday Topics emails. Um, parents have come to expect those every Tuesday. Uh, they know that what's in there is all of the information pertinent to the next week or two coming up. Fun facts, volunteer opportunities. Um, we will continue to celebrate our teachers and their hard work. Every year, we give them gift certificates to Target and do fun little things for them. Last year, we had students digging through their yards for rocks. So we could write U on them and every teacher got a little U rock, uh, gift. So it was a little kitschy, but it was fun. Um, we will round out the year as well by putting in new orders for new recess equipment so that the last few years, students have been coming back in August to new hula hoops and basketballs and, um, jump ropes. And, um, we'll just continue to be thankful for our volunteers.
So yeah, we have a couple of volunteers we wanted, wanted to thank. Uh, Beth Koos is our book fair chair and we could not do that without her. Julie Peterson helps us, um, with all our enrichment scheduling. Tanya Harrod, um, does all of our restaurant nights. Melanie Palmer, Stacy Paradise, Nadia Clifford, Julie McCabe, um, are, are help for Making Fun Day Come to Life. Uh, Jen Dane runs all our teacher appreciation events. Natalie Beirandivan for helping making game night a reality. Danielle Redfern, um, helped us with collecting food for the food drive. And Nicole Green tuned and counted more box tops than you can imagine. So.
You can cue the Oscar music. For us to come up here and tell you everything that our PTO has been doing, it's a privilege, but really, we're just the messengers. And we just wanted to make sure you guys heard the names that go along with a lot of that. Um, and finally, while we just want to say that we're so thankful for all of those people, um, for our board, for all the reasons we've mentioned, we're also so incredibly thankful for Jen Person, um, who just provides unparalleled guidance whenever we need it. Not that we need it very often, but when it comes up, it's fun. Um, when, and our, any issues arise, um, she's always present at our events. She is genuinely warm and positive. And when you're looking out and there's a hundred people at game night and she's just gracefully walking around the room, it's just been, um, such a pleasure to have that partnership. And she will very much be missed next year.
Thank you so much. We can't, you know, put a price on your time and all that you give back in making Lincoln Street such, um, a wonderful community because of your hard work putting into that and also to help offset our budget with everything that you provide the school, things at the school. We wouldn't have the money in our budget that, for, for you to provide that you're funding through enrichment and the grants and the Target gift cards. So, um, thank you so much for all of that. And, um, my fellow committee members.
Just like to add, um, love the fact that you're collaborating with the other PTOs and, and have that. That really is wonderful that you're tying together the K to fives, um, in the town. And also definitely recommend getting the five oh one C three. I know it sounds like a hassle and it is, but once you do it, once we get it for NEF, it opens up a lot of corporate sponsorship opportunities. So, um, corporate match.
We're patiently waiting until May fifteenth because that's the official ninety days from when we submitted our application. And they encourage you to not reach out for status until it's been at least ninety days.
Breathe.
Five of us talking at the bit going, okay, okay. Um, but no, and that was one of the things that came through when we did, um, pull all of the PTOs together. I think we're the last one to go through this process. And, um, there was a lot of sharing with opportunities and options that are out there once we get this piece of paper.
It's a good thing.
So, yeah, and it's been, you know, um, we've been talking with, uh, we spoke briefly with Alana Seer as well to try and partner in terms of enrichment programs coming up next year. Uh, so many times you can, you know, get a bulk presenter to come if you can get somebody at two schools in one day.
Absolutely.
So we're really excited about that. I feel like it's been a long time in the making and even though everybody does things a little bit differently, I think there's a lot of opportunity we can leverage.
Well, and again, thank your volunteer crew for everything that they do and everything that you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great year.
And if I could just add one thing, Jen and Deirdre are in the building pretty much every single day, probably as much as our P faculty.
Do they have badges?
And, uh, they even need them anymore. Um, but they're always unobtrusive and they're there for a purpose. And the purpose is always to support our students and support our school. And many things that I'm going to share in a minute will feel redundant because this is a PTO that really does partner with us in every possible way. Um, it's not just been about fundraising, it's just about, um, promoting a PTO. It's really been about working collaboratively with the school for what the school needs, not for what the PTO or its individual members need. And that's been, Jen's been a leader. This is your third year as one of our co-chairs. And Deirdre's done a great job as well. Um, so it's due to your leadership also. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to start with Lincoln Street School? Jen has presented so many times over these years.
Every time you hold your breath.
It's been sweet earlier, but, uh, this is.
So I thought that, um, for this year, what I would do is not present from the plan because you all have the plan and, uh, there's plenty in there. And I'm sure everyone did their homework and read it, um, from cover to cover. Um, but I thought I would start with this and as Jen and Deirdre talked about the theme of empathy and that's really a lot of what we focused on at Lincoln Street this year. And, um, I don't think any of us who are parents or who work with children can argue that that's one of the greatest qualities we can teach our children. And it does require cultivating and experiences and instruction. So this is a bulletin board that we have hanging in the school right now. And each of the shapes represents a different grade. So, um, let's say fifth graders are the doves. So when a fifth grader does something special, something gets written on one of the doves and it's, it gets added, um, to the bulletin board. So we're representing many different grades and many different acts of kindness at Lincoln Street. Someone can vouch for me that it was working. Uh, so one of the goal areas that we talked about was communication. And that's something that we, again, have been focusing on and have always believed that strong homeschool communication is another one of the essential keys to student success. So at the top, you'll see an example of one of the websites that our health office, our, our two nurses have worked on creating this year. And we're working under a new web, web design this year. So people are slowly but surely building their new websites and thinking of different ways to communicate with families. Um, we kicked off the year by talking about, um, how would we, as individual teachers and individual staff members, reach out to families? And people took time to share their ideas and practices that had worked well for them. So some of our staff members are using an app called Remind where teachers can reach out to families and it promotes two-way communication. Um, Seesaw is another. And, um, Twitter over here on the right, and that's actually a picture of Christine, um, who visited us on the day the Harlem Wizards were with us. Um, we tweet out a lot of events at Lincoln Street. And I think that, you know, it, there's always that, um, initial shock, especially when your child begins elementary school, when you had that daily communication with a preschool and every day you'd get the little sheet, switch on your aid for lunch today. This is how many times they use the bathroom today. And then all of a sudden, it's public school. We don't know as much about what's going on. And, um, we have found that Twitter and some of these other, um, applications have helped us bring the school into families' home lives and, um, even right onto their telephones. Community service, which Jen and Deirdre focused on a little bit, um, that's some of our students who've helped to gather up the soup cans after our Super Bowl, um, that we've kind of begun as a tradition each January now. Uh, but this year, we, um, met as a leadership team and talked about, should we add community service initiatives? Are we doing enough for the community around us? And what we realized was we had a really lengthy list of community service initiatives, but we thought, um, what we may not have worked on enough was helping students to reflect on, why do we do this? What is the value of bringing in a can of soup? What is the value of bringing in a healthy snack? Um, why do we go and visit Whitney Place in our Halloween costumes each year? What, what is the value of that? So, um, there you can see some of the events that I just mentioned listed. And here you can see, um, kind of some of the, the things that we've supported. So, um, the Apple Fest Parade, the Kindness Rock Garden that we began the year with. Um, I personally, that was one of my favorite things ever. We asked the kids to raise money and to see if they could earn a dollar, earn something on their own by doing a chore. So one student brought in that little piece of paper with two quarters taped to each day of the week. Uh, you know, when you see something like that, you know that really came from the child and not from moms. Let me just cut you a check. Yeah, let me, that somebody really thought about that. Um, last year's fifth grade class contributed money towards a buddy bench. That was their parting gift back to Lincoln Street School. And we spent a lot of time talking. And the little sign you can see behind it explains the rules for the buddy bench. If someone is in need of a friend, I'm sure you've all heard of it before. You sit on the bench and, um, that indicates to others that you're looking for someone to come and join you. So to help our students really think about, um, what, what do our actions mean and what do they do? Um, we've created a bulletin board right in the, uh, right in the entryway of the school and we've created little reflection sheets. So after certain, certain community service events, we'll ask the students to think about that and complete that in writing. So the example I have up there was our community service project was Jump Rope for Heart. Um, in doing this, we help people get surgery for their heart and raise money for people that have problems and raise awareness. So, um, we, we think it's been meaningful for our students to really think about what they're doing and why. Um, in terms of curriculum, which of course is the heart and soul of what we do in schools, um, there are many, many things. I know Sue, you've presented, Jill, you've presented, you know, I could just say ditto to everything that you've talked about, which, um, in reality demonstrates so much growth in Northborough over the seven years that I've been here. When I came here and it was kind of a mishmash of everything and a lot of freewheeling, um, curriculum things going on. And, um, through Christine's curriculum leadership and Greg's over time and everyone's input, um, we've really brought a lot of consistency. So, um, we've increased our use of data. Uh, did Maggie leave? Maggie, who was here earlier, has been instrumental in helping us with our pre and post assessments. So have our literacy coordinators, um, and really digging in and understanding, um, why are we using these assessments? What value do they bring and how are they helping us to inform our instruction? Our reading teachers have been phenomenal from all four schools, working together to help teachers work together to look at student writing, um, calibrate that and figure out, you know, what, what is expected at a certain level and how can we help our writers to grow. Um, under Greg's direction, we've had great movement in our science, um, curriculum. And we're kind of just at the end of completing, um, a multi-year purchase and introduction of helping our students meet the next generation science standards. Um, and we have, you know, we're all living MCAS and breathing MCAS right now. Um, and we've spent quite a bit of time not just helping prepare our students for this next generation MCAS, but, uh, in terms of the content and what they need to know and be able to do, but in terms of how to actually access the MCAS, um, which is now a, a whole different animal now that it's all online. So this is an example of something that teachers in all of our buildings have participated in this year. Um, we had a professional development day where we brought in Maggie, really, and Kathy and facilitated bringing in Graham Fletcher, who's a math expert. And, um, the focus of that day was really on problem solving. And what the teacher, the teachers learned many things on that day, but one of the kind of main takeaways was this idea of a three-act task. And it's really getting students involved in a real-life activity. And it's really getting students involved in a real-life activity, a real-life question, collaborating with peers and solving difficult but real-life problems. If you have X number of orange wedges, how many full oranges did you have? How do you know that? What's a high estimate? What's a low estimate? And through a series of videos, so I didn't put the video there, but that's a clip out of a video, students are given a problem in three different components. So the beginning question, information in the middle, and then a resolution. So that's kind of a different way of helping kids to problem solve. And the other piece of that is it's also designed to help kids struggle just a little bit. And one of the things that Maggie has really helped our teachers to become better and more proficient at is letting kids sit and think for a few minutes. Our kids are so used to that immediate gratification and someone will be there to help me or I can go on my phone and I can get the answer to something very quickly. What happens when you don't have access to everything immediately? How do you think through something and plan for it? This year, we wrote a grant to, when we looked at our MCAS scores and I noticed that geometry was an area where we could have spent a little more, had a little more effort, spent a little more time in terms of improving student progress. When I saw this in my inbox, that there was this program called Origami Geometry, the presenter, Matoko, who was very dynamic and very captivating, prepares a whole multicultural unit that embeds Japanese storytelling, I think I've talked about this here before, with math. And I'll just play for you a quick snippet from the culminating project that she did at Lincoln Street, which brought all of the students together where they were really celebrating Japanese culture, the art of origami, and what they learned in the area of geometry. And this video was taken by Northborough Cable. They attended the event and they put together a five-minute snippet for us.
Good afternoon, everyone. Or do you say in Japanese? Konnichiwa. My name is Matoko. And I'm from, and I'm from China, or not? Asia. Very good, very good. And I have a special privilege to share with the students, a special art form from my own country, origami. Everybody say origami. Origami is an art, more than just an art that's craft. It has great curriculum connections. And although you are here to enjoy the fruit of the children's hard labor, origami is also very much about progress. Origami is about focus, about paying attention to people and striving for precision. Origami is about using the limited form of the art to expand our imagination. Origami is about working together, supporting each other in learning and respecting each other's ideas and using creativity in solving problems. The fourth graders are going to sing for us the famous Shape Song.
A triangle has three sides. A triangle has three sides. I was on the mountain in the past. A triangle has three sides. A square is like a box. A square is like a box. And four sides, they're all the same. A square is like a box.
Who are you studying with today? Oh, you're the first one with your friends.
I am looking for a friend. Go. I am looking for a friend. I've lost a lot of friends. I've lost, I have found a friend.
A Perfect Match by Jen, Hannah, Rebecca and Hannah. One of my friends was very lonely, just off the gas, who was looking for her perfect match. Then she got into a transport voyage and I'm, and you made her a match. No way to the transport voyage. I have four sides and you have eight. I have one side here and you have four. And your side is looking into my heart.
I would like to tell you an old story from my old country. We live. And this story is called The Water of Life.
I think that will give you a pretty good update of, we don't want to overdo it. I think what was fun about Matoko was she had a very different style from the way that our teachers usually work with students. So we're very soft in the way that we work. "Oh, honey, you know, could you please sit down?" And she would, "You need to sit down. Sit down on your bottom right now." Or when she talked about precision, one little guy ripped his origami paper and she said, "That is because you weren't using precision. You made your fold and it wasn't precise." And the kid, they just, they were so captivated and so it didn't matter what she said or how she said it, they really, really responded to her and absolutely took in the information that she was sharing. So in terms of our goal area for student support services, our school psychologists have had a plan for a couple of years and they finally wrapped it up and brought it to fruition this year. This is a resource binder based on the work of Michelle Garcia-Winter. They have divided up the year by month in terms of a social thinking skill that would support classroom teachers and students. And they went into each classroom, at first they presented at faculty meetings and then they followed the concept up in each classroom. So we have a more consistent language school-wide in terms of the way that we talk children through problems and help them learn to solve problems on their own. So some of the things they talk about, how big is my problem? How to be a flexible thinker? When we help kids figure out that age-old question, is it bullying? Is it mean? Is it annoying? Is it teasing? So they've done a great job of pulling together resources for our classrooms. We also created as a district, a therapeutic learning program this year. This was housed at Lincoln Street and is there to serve as students in Northborough and Southborough who are struggling socially or emotionally after a number of steps and procedures have been put into place. But we worked together very actively last year, and Marie had a lot of direction with this, and our assistant directors as well, in terms of creating a philosophy and figuring out, you know, what is this program really all about? And at the end of the day, it's helping students be ready, be regulated, be safe, and be individualized and make sure that we have a program that meets the needs for students that haven't, to that point, been as successful as we would have hoped. So when we talk with the therapeutic learning program staff and parents, we talk about a hierarchy of goals for the program. So the goals for some of those students are going to look very different than goals for some other students. Safety is always our number-one goal. That's the most important goal of the hierarchy. You can see, it might seem a little surprising, but academic performance is more towards the end of the hierarchy because if students aren't safe and they're not comfortable and ready to learn, the academics are not going to come anyway. So some of the things that they focus on in the therapeutic learning program, or TLP as we call it, mindfulness, self-reflection, self-regulation, and the instruction of specific In our last area that we addressed in our school improvement plan, we obviously have technology as one of our goal areas. It's a moving target. I'm sure Julie will say some of the same things when she gets up later today. But I think that we've done due diligence in our ability to grow in our knowledge of technology and the resources that are out there. And certainly, when I think about the Lincoln Street School that I entered seven years ago with a little computer lab that was in a former gym locker room with a bunch of already aging Macs sitting, you know, around the edge of the room, we've really come a long way. So you can see students are practicing MCAS, they're using Google Slides to share their knowledge, they're composing responses to text, use of the interactive whiteboards. And we use a number of online-based programs like iXL to help students to work through some of their math skills and other content areas. So these are a couple of the other ways that we use technology. Go Noodle is an interactive website. When we talk about health and wellness and getting students up and moving, I see Go Noodle used around the building a lot, which is a series of videos that are designed to get kids up and moving during the school day. Quizlet is an online program that helps students really study and become more well-versed in some of the factual knowledge that they're learning in their classrooms. Lexia Learning is used, I think, in every one of our schools. It's probably the most widely and consistently used resource that we have in terms of helping our young readers develop in iXL. And one of the real benefits of some of these programs like Lexia and iXL is the data that they provide to us and the multitude of reports that our teachers can pull up in terms of seeing where students are, gauging their progress, and helping to really individualize learning for their students. So that brings us to the end. It probably took too long. I tried to speed through a little bit.
Thank you so much for, it's amazing how much you have done in the last seven years. And like you just said, with the small computer lab and everything has changed, and so much has changed the building. I mean, it's still a wonderful school with a great staff, but the improvement, you've brought the school up to so many improvements. Thank you so much for all that you've done for the school, for the students that have gone through the school. We've been very fortunate to have you.
Thank you. It has been a pleasure. And I was thinking about you, you were one of the very first people that I met in Northborough and you were there in one of my interview days. And you asked me to wait a minute so I could meet your kids. So I think it's fitting that we're both ending at the same time. And you've been a great supporter.
Yeah, for sure.
The other question, committee members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
(pause)
So our next item on the new business, so appointment of solar feasibility liaison. Is this a new appointment?
So as the committee knows, we've been engaged and involved in the exploration or the feasibility of solar installations, whether it be rooftop or carport, solar installations, not only here in Northborough, but in all of our three districts. And we have developed a good collaboration with the other two districts and have gone through a fairly extensive process in terms of seeking out a contractor to assist in every aspect of our feasibility and exploration process. It has been a very interesting year and a half, two years, I think. And at this point, we did receive some findings from Ty and Bond, which was the successful contract award presented to them to help us, guide us through the work. We have a ways to go, and the ways to go is phase two, which is the RFP process, which will allow us to go through a bid process to secure the next solar contractor to work with us. We do have all the data, so we do have some identified sites in all three districts in terms of what site would bring about the most return on investment. Because we've had many members who have been a part of this and one member who has been positively relentless, I guess, about the moving, about moving forward and looking at solar, not only as we seek to find more ways to go green, but also to send a message and a very positive message to our students that we are in fact exploring very energy-efficient means of providing additional resource to our school district. Given that, and given in fact that we've been talking about consistency and how can we make sure that the messages and the work that we have undertaken continue, I would like the committee to consider appointing what will now, after we dismiss or convene this evening, a member who has served throughout this process. And she will be hopefully still active to some extent, but having that continuity on the committee would be very helpful for us if we continue our work. I see another at least year ahead to go through the RFP process and any build-out that we might do. And that would be to appoint Patty Kress as our community liaison at large so that she can report back to the committee as well as I will throughout this process. So we have in the past appointed community liaisons and we're fortunate that we have someone in our community who's also been an active participant. So what I would ask, I would like to make a recommendation to the committee that we appoint Patty as that liaison.
I would appreciate my fellow committee members approving me to be the community liaison for the Northborough School Committee for the solar feasibility study or group as I've been a member. And it's something that's very much interested me and I'd like to see it through.
Any discussion require a vote? I move that we vote to appoint Patty Kress as the community member, solar feasibility liaison.
I'll second. I think it's a good idea to do that since you've been the project from the beginning, you have all the history and the background and the knowledge. And I think it makes sense that you would, I'm glad that you're volunteering to do such a thing to continue on with your service and help see that project come to fruition all the way through.
The committee would like me to come back after my term. If the committee is over, it would like me to come back and share my findings. I'd be happy to do that as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Because I know too. Thank you.
All green.
And the next appointment on our agenda this evening is for the school committee to appoint, our committee has been, this is going to appoint the member to the Town of Northborough's Financial Planning Committee. In your packet, there was the request, the citizen activity form from Mr. William Peterson, who is here in the audience this evening. Welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening.
I move the committee vote to appoint William Peterson Jr. to the Financial Planning Committee for a three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions for Mr. Peterson? No? All in favor? Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. And we have a technology update. First appearance before the national committee, who is our recently appointed technology leader for instruction and teaching and learning. So welcome to Julie. She's been making a road trip and has presented before the other two committees as well. I think it's fitting that Julie actually presented this evening because a lot of our conversation has centered around the importance of technology in our community and through the good work of the Lincoln Street PTO and the principals throughout Northborough. I think we've been able to see so many wonderful programs being implemented through our schools. And we appreciate that support. And I think Julie will appreciate having the opportunity to work with current technology and great software programs provided by all of the great work that you do each and every day to support our curriculum and our students. So we thank you for making Julie's job a little bit easier as she takes the challenge on.
So as you probably are noticing, I'm the director of the instructional technology piece, not the hardware piece.
As long as the other committee members... I can speak for the Lincoln Street Principal Search. As we met for round two, there was one round, and the committee did not come to a consensus. We came up, it's a great committee, as I had mentioned in our last meeting. It's a great committee. We had some great candidates who came in, then we interviewed, no consensus. We went out again, reposted, had more applicants. The committee, again, today, I met with the committee, and this evening I will ask my fellow Northborough School Committee members to allow me to stay on the committee again as a community representative, acting as a liaison to the Northborough School Committee.
I move that the school committee authorize Patricia Cress as the liaison to the Lincoln Street Principal Search Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the matter? All in favor? Thank you so much. We've been doing some great work, and I appreciate the opportunity to stay on the committee. We expect to interview next week, and hopefully we'll find a great, whoever the candidate is, it's not going to be as great and wonderful as Mrs. Parsons', but hopefully we still find a great candidate. And I'm not sure what's going on with Z.
So, we're actually moving forward with both committees, and I think the same message, which was communicated to the committee, is it's not about time, it's about finding the best candidate for both positions. And so, with the Z School, again, they're going out for their first round of interviews. I think it's completed today. And I want to thank everyone who's been serving on the committees. It's a definite commitment of time. Appreciate the vote to have continuity again throughout this process. We remain optimistic. It is a challenge, but again, we're dedicated and committed to finding the candidate that is absolutely right for each of our two schools, as challenging as that is. And so, we will provide an update in June, which may be we've moved someone on, and it may be that, you know, we're going to continue the search. We are well aware of the time of year. We're developing a Plan B, which will be very viable and provide for transition at the beginning of the year. More to follow. And again, thank you to everybody who's serving on the committee.
Especially thank you to Mrs. Seer, who's doing double duty on both...
On both committees.
Yeah, in addition to her. The next item, oh, another great item to discuss is Northborough Town Meeting Review. Thanks to all of you for attending the town meeting.
So, it was an interesting evening, and it was an enjoyable evening that continued into the wee hours, but a lot was accomplished in one night. And particularly, I'm pleased to announce that our K-8 budget was voted unanimous approval, I think from the audience. I didn't see anyone who was raising their hands in opposition. But also, a special appreciation to John Cudair and the town for recognizing our concern about condition of the Z boiler. That was not something that was on our capital plan this year. And in fact, through a lot of conversations, we were able to move that forward, working, as we always do collaboratively with the town. We miraculously were able to have a unanimous vote of a $357,000 boiler, much, much in need of replacement. I also want to thank Tom Meldler and certainly Principal Whitten, who's been advocating for this for some time, but also the flexibility of the town to recognize that, you know, even the best plan as presented needs to have some flexibility in it to meet the needs of our schools. And so, having a unanimous vote was tremendous. We also, on another issue that really supports the regional district, I do want to say thank you to the Northborough School Community for voting the establishment of a stabilization capital fund. More will follow on that, but we won't be able to move forward without the establishment of this fund, and that is in place for the regional district. So, and the regional budget passed unanimously through with the support of the Northborough School Community as well. So, it was a great evening, and a lot of good conversation from community members, well attended. So, I want to thank the school committee for being collectively all present and through, you know, late hours and lots of conversation, not just that evening, but throughout the budget process. It truly was a challenging but a wonderful process and collaboration together and with the town, as financial advisory as well. So, again, on to the closing out of '18, the beginning of extending '19, and in September we'll be planning for 2020. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll jump right back to number five, technology.
Before Julie begins, I do want to mention something that, again, is a nod to Lincoln Street, and we were able, Jen flashed a photo of the Wizards when they made their appearance to Lincoln Street before the big super basketball game. We had an opportunity to announce to the town, the Northborough Community, that evening that beyond a spectacular renovation project, in part because of the leadership of Jen Parsons throughout challenging times at the school level, and also Patty Cress's involvement as part of the Lincoln Street Building Committee, Lincoln Street received a very significant and high honor from an organization that was established by the federal government. And this organization is called the Collaborative of High Performing Schools, which recognizes very few schools across the United States for their outstanding energy efficiency and positive school learning environment. So, if you enter the Lincoln Street School and turn quickly around, and above student at work celebrating all of the wonderful attributes of the Lincoln Street School facility, you will see the CHIPS plaque that's presented above, and certainly Bill Peterson is in the audience. Congratulations on your new appointment. And Julie Peterson had so much to do also with the successful moving forward of this project at every phase and also served on the building committee. But what was really terrific for the students is there was a full school assembly, and, oh, one of the players who had to be at least seven feet tall was in the wings, and we invited him to hold the plaque. So, that made presentation about 10 feet tall with the arms length and the length of the plaque. So, it was something that was celebrated that morning by all the students, and it was great to share that moment with the kids and the teachers who really worked so hard to make this happen. So, again, Jen, thank you.
I was able to attend, and I'm happy I was because it was a great moment because I know as being a member of the building committee, we talked about how we were going to, every step of the way, every question, every decision we were made was with that CHIPS program in the back of our minds going, well, can we make this so that it conforms to the CHIPS requirements? We discussed it a lot when we were enduring the building fees and planning phases, and it's great to be rewarded for that work. So, it's a nice plaque. So, next time you're in Lincoln Street School, as soon as you walk in to the main foyer, it's right on your right on the wall there.
Great.
We covered four articles.
Okay. All right. So, I know you probably don't believe me, but I planned that whole thing just to sort of demonstrate, you know, how it is when teachers use technology, right? Very often, it doesn't work, right? So, we have to realize that we've, no one's really an expert, but we're more facilitators. And plenty of times when I was in the math classroom, something wouldn't work, and there was always some kid who would get up and help me figure it out, or we work as a team collaboratively to help figure it out. So, I didn't really plan it though. So, I wanted to take a little time tonight to introduce myself and to talk about my new role as the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning. First, a little bit about my background. I've lived in Northborough since 1999, right down the street from Mr. John Kane. My kids all attended Z School, then they went off to Melican, and then they all graduated from Algonquin. I've been an educator for over 20 years, a lot of years teaching high school math, some at a private high school, but most at Algonquin. And for the last four years, I've been Algonquin's Instructional Technology Specialist, but I'm really excited about this new role and to have the ability to share my passion with educational technology with all the schools in the district. So, in this new role, my main focus will be to provide the necessary training and resources for teachers to feel more comfortable using technology in the classroom. I will work very closely with the district technology team as well as our district technology managers, Andy Mariotti and TJ Karen, to ensure that the infrastructure and the hardware support our learning initiatives. So, technology will never replace good teachers, but it can facilitate the learning process, but it cannot replace the role of a teacher. That being said, teachers need to learn how to seamlessly integrate technology into their curriculum, so not as an add-on or an afterthought or an event. Technology should enhance the learning and transform a classroom experience for students. And if used correctly, it can really empower our students to be self-directed learners, to be more creative, and to be more connected. Over the last few months, I've had the opportunity to learn all the various aspects that this job entails. I've also had the opportunity to meet with all the building principals at the 10 schools in the district to talk about current and future educational technology goals. As you heard earlier, most of my professional experience has been at the high school level. So, I know I still have a lot to learn about K through 8 curriculum and technology, but I do feel as though my experience at the high school level will be a big help. As a high school educator, I was able to see how well-prepared the entering students were, but I was also able to see ways in which they weren't prepared. So, you know, this is one of the many reasons why it's important to provide collaboration time for teachers across school levels to sort of smooth that transition from grade to grade and to help horizontally and vertically align instruction and curriculum. So, our recent decision to start using Canvas in the district for grades 7 through 12 is a good example of this collaboration across school levels. Canvas is what's called a learning management system, and we just adopted it at Algonquin this past year. We will be using it at Melican and Toradier next year. The Instructional Tech Specialist here, Mike Brosha, has done a really nice job introducing Canvas and training teachers. For the past couple of months, we've had some teachers at Melican piloting Canvas to help to get ready for the full implementation next year. So, Canvas is a great tool. It simplifies teaching and learning by putting all the digital tools in one easy location. It makes communication and collaboration a lot easier. It helps students to stay organized and to get faster and more valuable feedback. We've had a really successful year at Algonquin with Canvas, and with the expansion of Canvas to the middle schools, we are hoping to help the kids in grades 6 through 8 to sort of stay up to date and to perform their best in all their classes. We're helping to prepare them for the high school, and we're also providing some online collaboration for both curriculum and other things between the middle and high school So, Canvas makes a lot of sense, so much sense, with the recent one-to-one initiative. And special, special thanks to Northborough Education Foundation for helping to make this happen in grades 7 and 8. According to Principal Carr, the initiative has been very well-received. Teachers have been able to more effectively engage students in curriculum and learning. Really, with a device in the hands of every student and with the use of Canvas, kids with all different learning styles can learn in the way that makes the most sense for Next year, the plan is for all the sixth graders to have access to a Chromebook, so that'll be great. And with the help, again, of Mike Brosha, the teachers will look for new and innovative ways to use the Chromebooks in conjunction with Canvas in the classroom. They will also then share their best practices, success stories, and lessons learned. So, it's always great when you can use technology to do things that you couldn't do before. With a simple iPad app, some green fabric or maybe some green paint, kids can use their imagination and their digital skills to add a lot of creativity to school projects. So, as you can see from these pictures, kids really enjoy using green screen technology. They can share a story, or they can become a character, and they can choose any background setting that they want. This is a picture of some elementary students using B-bots. And B-bots are little robots, and they are designed for use by young children. They're easy to operate, and they are the perfect tool for teaching coding, sequencing, estimation, directionality, and problem-solving. So, as you can see, the students love using the B-bots, and it's really a great way for teachers to creatively teach classroom content. Students in Northborough, grades 1 through 5, are learning about 3D printing and using Tinkercad, which is a free online tool to create simple designs. In these pictures, you can see some customized spacemen that were created by first graders. There is a 3D-printed board game that helps the students learn about states and counties. A 3D object in the hands of a student designer can really enhance and deepen kids' understanding about so many topics. And I think it's a great thing that we're exposing our students to a technology that scientists and engineers are using every day to solve real-world problems. In March, the Northborough Technology Team hosted an after-school Minecraft event. They were able to link all the students that were located at all the different elementary schools, and the students were engaged in building and competing, and they used something called Minecraft EDU, which is an online tool that promotes problem-solving and creativity and collaboration. Galen Hammond, Eric Gervais, Mike Brosha, and TJ Karen really helped a lot to make that a big success. So, as you can see, there's all sorts of exciting tech integration going on in the Northborough schools. Some of the things I mentioned earlier, a lot of the things that Jen mentioned, and this diagram, there's so many things that encompass instructional technology. It's still really important, though, that teachers and tech coaches be mindful of always integrating the technology into pre-existing curriculum. In order for our students to be successful, we want them to effectively know how to think and write and problem-solve and read, and we want to use the technology to help them to master those cognitive skills. We also want to make sure that our educators teach kids to engage safely and responsibly with technology so they can acquire those 21st-century skills they need to be successful in college, career, and life. Special thanks to Jen Parsons for letting me use her computer and for Greg. Thank you. And Keith, does anyone have any questions?
I had a quick question about the Canvas rollout. You said 7 through 12 was the reason not to include the sixth graders. Was there a rationale behind that?
Oh, 6 through 12. That was my mistake.
I didn't know if it was in this plan, but I just wanted to make sure I was sure about that.
No, it's 6 through 12.
And was it going to be a gradual rollout like it has been kind of at the high school in that you do the parent part separate from the student part?
We're still, yeah. So, I think at the middle school level, the parent involvement will be sooner than at the high school level now that we sort of understand the platform a lot better, but we're still working out those details.
Great. I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Good question.
I have questions too in regards to Canvas, which is great that, I mean, it just makes sense that you bring that onboard.
Sure.
My, one concern I have is, as you mentioned, with the mindfulness, my fear is that if there is a teacher out and all of the lesson plans are in Canvas and a sub comes in who doesn't have access to Canvas, is there...
a lot better, but we're still working out those details.
Great. I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Good question.
I have questions too in regards to Canvas, which is great. I mean, it just makes sense that you bring that onboard. One concern I have is, as you mentioned, with the mindfulness, my fear is that if there is a teacher out and all of the lesson plans are in Canvas and a sub comes in who doesn't have access to Canvas, is there going to be a workaround? Is that going to be something that is going to be, I mean, is that going to be addressed?
That's a really good question. There are, all the techs will be able to have, so I'm an administrator in Canvas, so there are times that I have to go in and I can masquerade as a user. So there will be people to be able to give them that access. But what's great is, as much as, you know, you might not want to believe this, the kids probably would be fine if the sub didn't have access to Canvas. It's really a great way to promote like self-directed learning, too. But, I mean, it would be nice for the sub to get in there, but in some ways, it might be okay that they don't necessarily get access, yeah. Some of these lessons can be self-contained and allow kids to sort of go through at their own pace and watch videos. And we've had either, even some teachers at Algonquin who've done like a video conference in when they've been out, so it has that capability, too.
Good to know. I wasn't aware of that. Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Congratulations on your new role.
Thank you.
And our next, I believe you like Docker, and the next item that is coming up is we go back to our school committee discussion and vote on school choice. We've already heard this during the public hearing. So I have, because every year, it's tricky because really we're voting not to do something. That is the actual issue if there's no discussion.
I move the Northborough K-8 schools not to choose to participate in the school choice in fiscal year 2019 school year.
Second. Any other discussion on that? Said it before, I know it sounds kind of rude, but I'll say it again. If you want your kids to go to Northborough schools, please move them to town. It's a great community, and it's housing for all of us. All in favor of the motion on the table? Will you be sending that off? Thank you. We have approval of grants and donations. Formo. Okay.
Just with the slight comment, we appreciate everyone's grants and donations early this evening. So much work, good work by the PTO and NEF and here again. Vote them all.
I move that the Northborough School Committee approve and accept the generous grants, including the Northborough Education Foundation's book grant of $240 to Lincoln Street School, Peaslee School, Proctor, Z, and Melican, as well as the parent donation of $88 to Z School for the Drama Club and the Hannaford Helps Schools $249 donation to Peaslee School.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on these? All in favor?
No, I was just going to say, just to thank the NEF, to thank the parent, if they're anonymous or not, whoever is donating to Z, again, please thank them. And then whoever is in contact with Hannaford, to reach out to them and obviously thank them for supporting the Northborough schools.
All in favor? Thank you, and do send our thanks to generous donors. This evening. Superintendent's report to the committee.
In the packet is the current enrollment projections. You'll note that it hasn't changed significantly from last month in terms of those classes and grades that we are projecting to be capped next year. I will, again, thank Nancy Bisset for her daily due diligence in terms of tracking these enrollments. We do have waitlists in certain schools where you've seen the grades capped, but the good news this year is because we have turned over the routing, the bus routing to NRT, they worked on all of the routes over April vacation. And I'm anticipating having a conversation this week, early next week, and having those routes finalized to the extent that we know them now. We moved all the students forward, and we already have our kindergarten enrollment. That will allow us to contact the parents who may be waitlisted or parents who are newly enrolled and provide for them the exact placement pending any change of the waitlist for the fall, which is actually two months, I think, earlier than we've had in the past because we didn't have the routing. So that's great news. We will be, again, this year, providing the dates, but as of June 20th, we will be enrolling all students in the K5s at Central Office again throughout the summer and then transferring that back to school in September. So we've actually continued to streamline the process by sort of sharing that information in terms of placement sooner than later. We still are registering students at the schools for any class or grade or any grade that's not yet capped, and that's going well. So we're entering our third year of this redistricting, and again, this has a lot to do with why we want to continue to not vote for school choice because we are in the process of still redistricting. We do, we are seeing students move in. Last year, it was grade two and three. This year, we're seeing K1 with enrollments coming our way. So we won't know until, you know, the end of August where this all and where we all fall with enrollments, but we are well-prepared to address it even sooner than we were in the previous year. So, again, thank you. Daily conversations. Jen, we had one today. Three students, was it three different grades?
Three or five or six.
Three students, right? Then twins, a lot of sisters, which always creates an interesting dynamic, so. Thank you. Also, in your packet, there should be, but mine is not, a general fund expenditure report. This is a very busy time for everyone who's dealing with finance because a lot of things have to happen as we move closer to closing out June 30th. That's in your packet. And I do want to point out in the expenditure report, you'll notice there seems to be some fairly significant fluctuations in the line items. We've never, and we stay within the appropriated amount, but this year, in part because of really great improvements we've done around staffing and technology, conversations that happened over the summer, and repositioning folks in their correct line items for efficiency when we create the end-of-the-year report, you'll notice some shifts, but those shifts were well within the appropriated amount. So it looks like, whoa, what's taking place here? But really, it's just aligning people in their proper line items so that when we submit our end-of-the-year report, they're in the right place according to the Department of Ed's function codes. So that's really what that's about. So I do want to alert everyone to that. Also, we do need a vote to approve to.
There is no significant variance from the previous month, but we will need a motion.
I move that we approve the monthly general fund expenditure report as of April 30th, 2018, pending audit.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And happily distributed approved budget. For reference only, no discussion that's there. For your review, there is one additional item underneath FY '19 approved budget, and that is something we've talked about throughout the year, always looking for opportunities to increase our funding beyond town meeting vote. And we had two focus areas this year. One was facilities rental, which we're still pursuing, and the other is where are we in terms of our cafeteria and our cafeteria costs and our revenues versus expenses? And so we really have not visited this since 2012. So it will be, you know, seven years before we've actually considered making any adjustments to the cost of full meals mostly or à la carte. So we do have Kyle in the audience, I think, he's still out there, to address some specific questions with regard to meal planning, those kinds of things. What I have provided for you is really a snapshot and the rationale for why I believe the time is right for us to take this up for consideration. So it's important to note, and there's no vote required this evening, it's a three-part. There's no vote required this evening, but what is important to note is this, because it is a revolving fund, the cafeteria is self-funding, the only source of revenue, there are two sources of, one source of revenue, which is fees, cost, meal cost, pricing. And if those revenues are lower than the expenses, we can't go into a fiscal year in the negative. And so what has happened, not just in the snapshot that you see in front of you, but rather going back even probably to 2012, is that the cafeteria has ended up in a deficit position. And then that happens simply because, you know, the number of students who buy lunch from year to year can change, or the federal reimbursement changes, or the cost of meal, you know, the food costs skyrocket. We went through a discussion about why is there no fresh lettuce? Well, lettuce was extremely costly at one point in time, or the cost of milk. It can change in media. So even before this snapshot that you have, which is FY 2016, and I looked at it a couple of years previous, there was a deficit that was present. And the only way to address that deficit is to balance that off of the operational budget. Well, since the operational budget works on an appropriation, it basically creates an amazing challenge for us as we try to close out the year. And where we may have realized efficiencies throughout the school year, maybe energy costs weren't what we budgeted, or perhaps we made some really good hires and early on, we were able to save some money in the salaries line account, or our substitute account was funded at X and we didn't need that many subs. So throughout the year, there's always opportunities for us to do mindful pre-budgeting of special education. We're allowed by law to prepay special education because we know of the significant swings from year to year. When one of our revolving funds, like kindergarten or light cafeteria runs in a deficit, all of those sort of opportunities are no longer, they no longer present themselves in terms of supporting supplies, resources, or prepaying special ed. So as you can see by the projection, you'll see what the revenue has been, and only went back a few years because the story's the same prior to this. You've got FY '16, '17, and FY '18, actual and projected. You'll also note that our revenues did not exceed expenses. And so for those years identified in the sheet in front of you, we've been offsetting those deficits with those minimal savings that we've been able to realize in the appropriated budget. We've had about a 45% participation rate, and that, I calculated that based on the highest average daily attendance and the highest daily average meal, full meal purchase in any given year. So the participation rate has been fairly consistent. What you have in front of you is a snapshot of a three-year increase. All of the projections that I use to forecast this are consistent. You'll see the footnotes and the assumptions on the bottom. Any one of these assumptions can change. We could have increased revenues, we could have decreased revenues, we could have the federal government coming in with a 7% reimbursement, highly unlikely, so we used a 1%, which is pretty much the variable. And then expense on food, we used 10% food expense and a 2% projection on salaries because that is in fact what the contract is. That can change. If senior members retire, we hire new folks. There's a lot of factors in play here. But let's assume these assumptions are pretty close. You'll note that we will end up this year with a $62,000 deficit, which then...
Clarify, that's being subsidized by the operational budget?
Well, it would be offset with the operational budget, yes. And again, this has historically been the case since 2012, at least from what we could tell. So I'm bringing it forward to demonstrate to you there is a need to do something. Now, we can certainly, and we will work on increasing our revenues and our meal sales, and we will certainly work on decreasing our expenses. Certain things like state and federal reimbursement are out of our hands, and that changes. If we do nothing, the deficit next year, given these assumptions, is even greater. So that's a reality that we deal with, and I will share with you, it is a concern. It's been a concern of mine for a couple of years. But when I marry that with potentially deficits in our kindergarten revolving account, which may occur because of collected tuitions, reduced fees in any particular year greater than another, so when I put that together with the other sort of risk factors and the need to go to the operational budget to offset these deficits, it's a point of conversation. So I am requesting of the school committee to consider a 25 cent increase on full meals next year and a 5% increase on à la carte, which by the way, improves the adult meal sales. If you note on the bottom, the last assumption bullet is the average increase per child. If a student purchases a full lunch 180 days a year, which I don't think happens too often, we all see kids roundbaging it from day to day, is about a $45 per year increase, assuming that a child eats a full meal every day. And, you know, that's not usually likely. And so that's what we're working with. It is such a concern longitudinally that I've projected forward what would happen, and we certainly don't have to entertain this evening, but since we're looking at numbers, what would be the result if we had a 25 cent increase over the next three years? And you'll still see that we're running in a deficit. And so again, we have other options, changes in salaries, increase in reimbursements and revenues, but this is a snapshot. Attached to this is just generally information about the meal reimbursement process, which changes every year. But you'll also see a last handout, a survey indicating that the average meal, school lunch pricing for the schools surveyed, many of them, I think all of them, are part of the Assabett Valley Collaborative, so they are our neighbors, but also, some of them are also regional district purposely selected for good comparison. The average is $3.09, and right now, that would put us lower than the average. Again, a lot of information to share, but the bottom line is the bottom line in terms of where we need to go, I think.
What's the cost of the lunch at the high school? Is it $2.75?
We're pretty much consistent. The difference at the high school is that there's a lot of à la carte sales, and so I would say that we have this issue in all three districts to certain degrees. And to some extent, it could be on the number of folks who maybe have free and reduced lunch percentages may swing from district to district, but I would say this conversation is taking place in all three districts.
This is just K to eight?
Yes.
I had a quick question just for me to understand it. Could I get a brief kind of summary of what is underneath the cafe miscellaneous expenses? It's miscellaneous, so it's a little bit everything. I'm just curious of what exactly that would typically include.
That includes the adult meals, potato chips, things that they might buy that aren't necessarily part of a subsidized or reimbursed meal plan. So, you know, students might be picking out one item that isn't necessarily part of that full meal.
So does that offset, like, is that aligned with the à la carte?
Okay, so Eliza, okay.
Yep. Okay. So like at the top, you have revenue, full meals, and then à la carte, and then at the bottom for expenditures, your miscellaneous expenses would be the expenses that are aligned with your à la carte items?
No, the miscellaneous expense, it would appear that way, absolutely, but the miscellaneous expenses are things that aren't food-related, so paper goods, plastic forks, you know, potentially cleaning supplies. I would also add that in FY 2016, and the reason why you see not available in '16 and '17 is that we did not have... 17 is that we did not have new kids fully implemented in all of our schools. That has provided a great sense of confidentiality for students as they're going through and selecting their menu options, but also a lot of record and data that allows us to get and maximize that full reimbursement, or that reimbursement from the state and the federal government. So prior to that exact data that was generated through new kids, it's questionable whether we had enough data to maximize our reimbursement. I'm assuming that we did. But this clearly really provides all of that information in a snapshot form, and really allows us to better manage our cafeteria in terms of services and preparation and just eligibility for reimbursement, and to some extent grants, because they use some of that information.
So we haven't closed out fiscal year 18 yet, so that's just a projection?
It's a projection.
$62,000, but I mean, we're...
We have to remember, we missed six days of school because of snow, and they'll be accounted for at the end, and some of this could fluctuate. I think that, you know, if we'd like to entertain a vote, I think we may see that number decrease, but we may see that number increase as well. So I would be happy to come back in June, provide an update. I can send you the copy of the mail if you'd like, but just to provide an update. But that is a significant amount of money for those assumptions to have a dramatic effect to the positive, I think.
Right, so it's pretty, it's, it's pretty certain at the, where we are right now in the school, and also looking at the previous two fiscal years that we, it was in the red, it's pretty certain that we'll be in the red this year, and going to a $3 school lunch is...
Below the average.
Probably still, it's below the average. It's also still going to cause the district to most likely still be in the red. However, it's just a small jump of 25 cents, and it would help us be less in the red in terms of being supported from the operational budget.
If we need to vote on this, would it be possible that we just vote for FY 2019, since we already have FY 2019, and see how that goes, and then work the other two years into the budget process? I would rather do that than just kind of pigeonholing an exchange. It's going to be a shock to people's systems as well, and if you do it three years out with that increase, I think it might be a softer transition if we just do one year at this time.
Yeah, and go year to year.
I just wanted to show you a projection, right, and the long-term need to justify the short-term increase.
Correct.
I think it's, it's a valid point, too, that you mentioned in terms of the budget, because cafeteria is self-funding, and ultimately, that's what we want it to be. We're only going to budget because we have a deficit. And so, you know, that's a bigger question. Do we want to, I think, it's, it's too premature to have that conversation, but I think we should revisit that when we have our budget season next year.
It's always in the back of the mind when we look at it.
But if we vote for a 25 cent increase for one year, at least it gives parents time to plan and, and know, gives them cost certainty for, you know, what lunch has got cost.
And our increases, our salary increases have been 2% at least a year, and that's been seven years without an increase. So that alone would have actually seen a spike in, and not an offset in revenue.
Do you want to vote now?
I'm open to them, the motion for the one year.
I move that we, is this binding? So if we move that, that we're going to change, all right?
I would love to have this in place at the start of the school year, so we can communicate it, have plenty of time.
Absolutely. I move that we increase the full lunch price from $2.75 to $3 for fiscal year 2019.
Second. Any further discussion?
Is there also a change to à la carte?
It's 5%, but overall, it's, you know, it's like a $1,000 increase when I calculate it from year to year, so...
But do we need to have that in the motion?
Yes, please.
And?
And a 5% increase on à la carte blended sales.
Second.
Second to the amendment. So we're voting on the amended motion. All in favor?
Thank you. And we, we will definitely bring back where we are at the end of the year, in August anyways, when we close out the year. Thank you.
So we are, educational policy, approval of Melikan Middle School's sixth grade stone environmental trip. Fortunately, right now, we're still all season. School committee members, we've seen, you have all, I assume you have all seen the presentation. It's the same, I'm assuming the trip is the same as it has been in the past.
Yes.
I know my children attended, and...
Mine will be going next year.
Same for me.
I have another one, yeah.
Excited.
It's been a great experience, and according to our school committee policy, we need to take a vote because of the transportation and the overnight, overnight issue. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
Just for the stone trip, I guess.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I do move that the school committee approve the Melikan Middle School's sixth grade's stone environmental field trip as presented in our packet today.
Second. Any further discussions or questions for Principal Carr?
Chair, my daughter's looking forward to it.
Great. All in favor? You and Anna, thank you. And the next one is also a trip that we have heard about in the past. We've been on the committee before, and Peaslee has, for many years, as their fifth grade, has attended Nature's Classroom. Dr. Barnard, you have some additional information you'd like to share with us about the trip? I know it's in the packet, we'd love to hear from you.
They are today. They went this morning. Yes, perfect day, hot weather.
And wow, this is amazing that you are a whole year in advance.
Don't mess around.
Preparation.
I move that we approve the request for the fifth grade trip to Nature's Classroom in Charlton, Mass. for May of 2019, for the dates of May 8, 9, and 10.
Second.
Those dates are tentatively booked.
Tentatively.
Wouldn't confirm them.
May of 2019.
Says in the letter, yeah, tentative.
We'll take it in May.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to policy development and distribution. Correct me if I'm wrong, but are these all...
Yes, ma'am chair, they're for all first reads.
First reads.
So if, we certainly can take them up one by one this evening, or collectively review them, and if anyone has any edits that they would like to suggest, which will be second read, which will be next month, we can send them through the chair or directly to me.
Will these be coming through at combined later this month?
The new religious service files.
One will be coming back to you at combined later this month.
Will it combine this month or not?
June.
So my, my comment on the, I had brought up in policy subcommittee, the McKinney-Vento provision for the school immunization requirements, J 120. We are not in violation of that by keeping the language as it is. Were you able to check with our council?
We did send it to council, and they made...
And they said no. Because it seems to be...
I believe that's the patent.
It's true. Our council is fine with that. I was concerned because of the provision of the federal act makes reference specifically to a student who is experiencing homelessness. And that statement is not exactly what we have in our policy, but if, our council is fine with it.
Do you want to move forward and vote on these tonight, or do you want to wait?
Committee.
Well, as an overview, these have all been vetted by council, and we have looked at them, and the edits are what we have here.
I believe they might need to come back for a second read.
So Greg is underlining something, and point valid.
Point, Patty, the third paragraph does talk about required immunizations or are not otherwise exempted, so that is where legal counsel edited.
Ah, okay, so it is covered there. Great. They do good work.
Since these are all minimal changes, I think, looking through these, some of it's just language and not necessarily, I mean, the only really added thing is the F for N thing that seems substantial, I would feel fine moving forward with these this evening, except the religious one, of course, which will come up in combined, but I'll put forward to my...
If you'd like to make a motion?
I will motion that we accept the policies for school immunization requirements, now J 120, policy head injury and concussions, policy J 40, policy dispensing of medications, J 220, and policy of school-based public access deliberation program, E 210.
And second?
To be, yeah. Accepted.
Second.
Any further discussion on the policies? All in favor? Thank you.
So we're holding I 340 for combined.
Combined.
Perfect.
And sharing. Welcome.
For the diehards who have stuck around.
Thank you. Here. Anyone anything to share this evening? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Administration?
I will be very brief. I know there's been a lot of sharing tonight with lots of good things happening. I just want to highlight two events at Proctor this month. We had a group of fifth graders approach myself and Lori Miller, one of our teachers, about doing a multicultural fair, celebrating cultures that make up Proctor's learning community, so we have that on May 10th, Passport to Proctor. So we're going to have different foods, different cultures represented, activities that relate to those different areas that we're going to be exploring and providing information on. This was all done by fifth graders, so it's all of their work, which I think speaks volumes, that they were the ones who really spearheaded this and brought this forward, and they've gotten their classmates involved, so we're very excited about that. And then on May 30th, we are the lucky recipients of a family literacy night from Kellogg's, BJ's, and Scholastic, and they are partnering with us to bring in an engaging evening for families about how parents can help with literacy at home, and we're going to do a presentation with them on the summer slide about how they can help their children in the summer. We have a read aloud with an author coming in, and there's also going to be a book fair. And every child in the school, regardless of if they are able to attend or not while our book fair is running, get a book voucher, so they can go in and get books. This is a $7 book voucher for every student. So we're very, Eric at our PTO was able to get that. They had been to an expo, they entered into it, and a year later, we got a phone call, and we weren't sure if it was a sales call, but then, once they started talking to us, we were pretty excited that we were able to, you know, we were chosen and we're bringing this to Proctor on May 30th, so.
Great.
And I'll also be brief, I will stick to just two items. I wanted to recognize the Peaslee School faculty and staff for an incredibly successful STEAM night. We invited families, you know, all of our students and their families to come in, engage in some really exciting and innovative learning activities that all centered around science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We had such a huge attendance that we were afraid that we might be scolded by the police for having people parked all the way up and down Maple Street and a few other places that maybe they shouldn't have been at. But that was just a testament to the success and the hard work of the teachers and the staff who put it together, it was fabulous. And then I also would like to thank the Peaslee School PTO for organizing the Wizards basketball game, the Borough Breakers versus the Wizards. I'd like to thank Christine Johnson and Greg Martino for being part of the team. We had a lot of representation from all of the North Borough schools. Mrs. Witten was out there, yes. It was, it was a lot of fun. We've had a lot of really positive feedback, and it was a great way to see people from all of our schools together in one place at one time. It's really cool. Jen Callahan did a great job as the coach.
Coach Callahan was a coach. Yeah. Just a couple of quick things for the Z School. We have our spring concert on May 23rd, so we will be celebrating with Mr. Phelps, who is going to be taking a year sabbatical to work on his doctoral degree at Boston University next year. They select one doctoral student per year, and this year it was Alan Phelps, so we're really pleased with that level of professional commitment that he has. I know there are a bunch of students and families that are disappointed by his not being at school next year, but we're thrilled for him. We, too, will be working on the UN's World Day of Cultures for the month of May. We have a variety of activities planned. Our high school students, under the direction of Jen Suker, who's the ELD teacher, will be coming to Z School on Monday, May 21st, to do small instructional groups with our students about the places where they come from. From what I understand, we have students from Guatemala, I think Russia, a couple of different places this year, so we're really excited about that. We have Crocodile River coming to do some dance work with us on the 24th through the cultural council. And then on the 31st, we have a large school culminating activity. Backup for Hanazia will be joining us on May 11th also as an author representing culture of India. But our World Day of Culture event on the 31st will be a school-wide celebration in the afternoon. We have some students who are putting together performances. We have families who are coming in to do sharings at each grade level. Crocodile River will be back in the afternoon to do a whole school dance event with us. Our art teachers are putting together their biannual art show, which will be representative of cultural art, so that's 6 to 7 o'clock on the evening of the 31st. And then there is a townwide open invitation for Crocodile River on the night of the 31st at 7 o'clock at the Z School, so that notice will come out, too. The other elementary schools are, I know that they've done some performances there as part of PTO enrichment programs. And I do want to back it up a little bit, we are in the throes of MCAS. I think we'd like to all consider ourselves to be somewhat technologically savvy, but we really have been assisted with the behind-the-scenes technology team in the district, clearly under the direction of Greg Martino and Julie Doyle, but consisting of TJ Karen, Migrosia, Eric Gervais, Galen Hammond, Darren Austin, and Andy Mariotti. So we're really grateful to have those people behind us, making sure that things are working when the whole class of Chromebooks freezes. It's not left to me to figure out, but they're right there to help us. So it's gone off without a hitch. It's been a pretty intense testing experience, but it's not because of the technology. So I will speak on behalf of my colleagues here, we are really grateful for that support, so. Oh, and Kids Fest is May 19th from 11 to 3. Sorry.
Are you good?
I'm done.
I just wanted to mention Trish Rollins, that Lincoln Street School phys ed teacher has been named the Mass Association of Physical Education Teachers' PE Teacher of the Year.
Wow.
So she's done a great job and was absolutely deserving of this honor, so there will be a few upcoming things at Lincoln Street celebrating Trish, including a breakfast where she'll be honored at the Doubletree in Milford this coming Sunday morning. So we're very proud of her and happy for her.
Chief Man.
Are you done?
I am.
That's great. At Melikan, of course, we have a lot going on as well, but I will echo Sue's comment about MCAS. We started our MCAS testing before vacation. We had sixth and seventh graders testing at the same time, and that is quite a feat with our technology. So over 420 students on Chromebooks at the same time with 45-plus testing spaces, that's a lot. And the tech staff was, there are people I don't even know that were here that were helping with technology, so it was wonderful. Everybody had walkie-talkies. And there were glitches, but the kids are very calm, calmer than the adults, and we got through it all. We tested last week, and we started our math testing today, session one, again, some of the eighth graders at the same time, it's a lot. Last week when we tested, our power blinked off and on, and I think the adults, again, you know, we are very anxious... again, you know, we are very anxious about it. The kids just rolled with it. And we have learned that the device actually saves their information anyway, and then it gets pulled into whatever, cyberspace or something. But anyway, it's gone off without a hitch. And so, it's nice, actually, to have those glitches and see what happens. It's gone very smoothly. So, thank you to the tech staff for their help and to our teachers and support staff. A lot of work goes into the planning and the administration of MCAS. I also wanted to just mention our student support services personnel, who've been working very closely with transition meetings over the past several weeks. And a lot of that just sort of happens naturally. Every single year, we are transitioning kids from fifth to sixth grade, and we're also transitioning students from eighth to ninth grade. It's a lot of work district-wide, and it doesn't go unnoticed. There are meetings every day, parents in, staff in from different places, and it's just, it's going great. And that's a lot of collaboration from student support services. So, thank you, Marie and her staff. And then finally, our LK five K, the race that raises money towards cancer research in memory of Lisa Kaplan, is being held on May nineteenth. So, that's a nice community event as well. So, we hope to see you there.
Men come to kids fast.
You ride right by it.
I know.
We'll stop off.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, thanks. I'm good.
You ready for bed?
Just wanted to thank committee members and everybody that attended Team Trivia Night. Word that I got from Sue Olgar coming in was that they raised over fifteen thousand dollars. So, that, again, is an event that's near and dear to my heart. And to see how it's grown and how successful it is, and then to see all the grants that are funded back to the schools is just wonderful. So, you're invited next year if you want, okay? So, you're more than welcome to come back down.
What about the costumes? Did you like?
Costumes, the costumes were awesome. That's the favorite part for me every year, is to figure out, okay, who's dressed as what and why. So, that part is another kind of side benefit to the event. But hopefully, everybody enjoyed it and had a wonderful time, had a couple of, you know, relaxing beverages with some friends and had some laughs. And looking forward to next year already, so.
Already working on the questions?
Already working on the questions. Next year is actually the tenth. So, big one for the tenth. So, we're going to have to go all out. So, that's going to be a big landmark event. So, we're looking forward to that. And congratulations to the team from the high school who ended up winning. So, trophy, get some good visibility at Algonquin.
Two more thank yous, in addition to all the good words that were shared. One, thank you to Rota Web. The Second Annual International Night was a huge success last Friday. A lot of administrative, administrators were there. And certainly, you know, we have a school community, but it takes the school community sometimes to make the connection with their community. And that was certainly what was taking place that night. It was just high-energy event. And again, this was the Second Annual Rainchild of Rota and all the other English-language instructors throughout the district. So, it was a great night. And also to Marie, quietly seated at the end, and to all of the special ed team, the assistant, Debbie Mew, and Eric Armstrong, and our administrative team have all participated, and our teachers, in the coordinated program review audit, a much look-forward-to event. Every five years, is it? It comes too soon. And it's a two-year process. It's very intensive. I know Rota will be sharing an update at the combined meeting, so everyone will hear about that. But they've been out and about in our district, everywhere, in every building, having lots of conversations from the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education. And the grand finale is tomorrow. Greg and I will be interviewed. You get to do the final exit interview. So, and then they're gone. So, we wait for the results. But by all accounts and all the feedback, it's gone incredibly well. Lots of hard work by all of our support teams and teachers. So, great job.
Nice to have you here tonight, Marie. All set, then?
Good wishes, volunteer, and Jack, and good luck for all of your support to every one of the members of the school.
So, there is the distribution personnel report in the packet.
So, we already expressed good words and good wishes to Phelps.
Future agenda items, election of... We are actually moving Mellican to the call.
So, maybe any...
Get the new bees in nice and, you know, slow.
We'll do our best.
Well, maybe a quick update on Nature's Classroom, to see how it went.
Thanks.
There is a master planning committee meeting tomorrow, so I will have an update for that. But that'll be audio sharing, certainly agenda.
And again, thanks for volunteering to be on that committee. It's, you know, it's always...
And you're going to have to hit on the personal searches, so.
Oh, yes. So, we have bills and files. Is there any other business which may legally come before the committee this evening? And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?